Good evening, everyone, councillors, officers and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, I would say that I'm finding this room a little bit hot and sticky, so gentlemen and ladies, if you feel you would like to move your jackets, please do so. Can I, before we start the business, refer you to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me, and I hope on that screen as well? Could you make sure you know where your nearest exit is, and if you hear the fire alarm, please will you make your way down the stairs and meet over in the Waitrose canopy over there? Could you all check your phones, please? Make sure that they're turned to silent or turned off? And councillors, can I please ask you to make sure that your cards are firmly in the Members of the public, as we say, often this is not a public meeting, it's a meeting we hold in public. We look forward to hearing you join the public speaking debates, but we would ask you, please, not to join in the debate once the members have started speaking. Before we move on, can I introduce the officers this evening? I did this last time and the webcast failed, but if somebody could put, you've got this on, have you? So, on my far right, that's Lewis Jones from the legal team, Steve Weaver, the interim head of DC, Louise Jandell, the team leader for Southern and Western, back to me is Flo Taylor, the planning officer's Flo Taylor, Chris Turner, Jane Macmullen and Rachel Kellis. Thank you very much for putting the light on. So may I move on to the main items, the minutes of the first, they have been on the table for the last half an hour. Are you content that I assign them as the true record of the last meeting?
Agreed.
Apologies for absence, Emma.
And it's just apologies from councillor Robert Knowles.
And declarations of interest, Emma?
None before the meeting, but I believe Hesamere Town Councillors declare a non-perpetual interest in the applications.
Members, anybody else wish to declare an interest? Any questions from members of the public?
None received.
Moving on then to item five, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation? Steve, do you have any updates for us?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to make members of the committee aware, I sent an email out early this afternoon regarding a European Court of Justice ruling relating to the habitats regulations, and that kicks in in respect of our consideration of applications, particularly where they affect the special protection areas. It's a ruling that does have some potential implications for the processes around planning applications. We are looking at it and will be giving you a fuller briefing in the days to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on then to performance against government targets, this issue again, Steve.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, so if I take members to page five of your papers, sorry, seven of your papers, five on the other one. These are now the end-of-year figures in terms of how we've performed on the two key government measures of speed and quality. I'll deal with speed first, and you can see both in respect of majors and non-major applications for this year, financial year just gone, really excellent performance, major applications running over 97% and non-majors over 98%. That represents a colossal amount of hard work on behalf of members and officers together, and I think, you know, reflects a really excellent decision-making performance in that regard. Turning to quality, I'll start with the non-majors, as I traditionally do. So the government target there is that no more than 10% of applications where they end up at appeal, as a proportion of all applications, should be overturned, allowed at appeal, and you can see we're down at 1.58%, so that's clearly in very safe territory indeed. Turning to the major applications, in terms of the assessment period that the government introduced, there's still one major appeal decision left outstanding. We have had a fairly recent run of decisions that have supported the council's position that is taken, following the adoption of the local plan, and as a result, as I say, our statistics for this year just gone, and also for the assessment period, again, are below that 10% threshold. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening. Can I just go back to the planning service performance on quality, government target? Looking at the last assessment period, that is for a two-year period, and the current one for this year is a one-year period. Is that, why is it different? Has it been updated or something?
Steve, would you like to reply? I think I know the answer.
Thank you, Chairman. We've only had one assessment, formal assessment, period from the government so far, which is that April 15 to March 17 period. The next assessment period hasn't been announced, so what we've given in the last row is our best estimate based on the last financial year, which is the 8.96. That's not an official government measure, that's just a direction of travel, if you like, in relation to where we currently sit.
Thank you, Steve. I don't want to prolong anything tonight, because I think we've got such a lot on the agenda, but if anybody else wishes to make a comment, please feel free. Otherwise, we'll move on to the main business, the applications for planning permission. Should a site visit be necessary as a result of anything on this agenda? It'll be held on Tuesday, the 5th of June, doesn't it make the year fly by? So we're moving on, we are going to take the borough house applications in a slightly different order from that set out in your agenda. So we are going to take the, getting the number right for you, we're going to take WA 2017 0928 first, okay, and then 0913, and we'll finish with 1074. So we're taking the three dwellings application first, then the extension to the cottage second, and then finally the change of use. Everyone quite happy, I hope, with that? So, straight on to then Flo, who's going to introduce the first application for us.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is an application, an outline application for the erection of three dwellings, including access layout and scale, following the demolition and removal of the existing buildings and structures on the site. Just before I start, there are two update sheets relating to this application. The first just clarifies that since adoption of the local plan, we do now have a housing land supply, and on that, we also, it also notes we've got one additional representation has been received, which challenged the County Highway Authority response, the data used, current movement estimates, and also saying that planning permission should be refused due to a material increase in traffic movements. Officers have liaised with the County Highway Authority, which is satisfied that the current three dwelling proposal would not result in a material increase in traffic movements compared to the existing lawful use of the site. And the County Highway Authority has to base their estimate on potential traffic generations from the lawful use of the land and not from the current movements. On update two, just two amendments to the report, the reference to the erection of a detached garage to serve Borough House Cottage was omitted from the agenda report, and there's updated figures in terms of the reduction of the footprint on site, it's just slight miscalculation, but these changes do not alter the conclusions of the agenda report. Turning to the location plan on the screen, the main area of the site is located at the northern end of the shared access from Jumps Road. Jumps Road is down to the south of the site, where the mouse is pointing now, shared access, which obviously forms part of the application site to allow access to the properties, and then the main part of the site is in the northern half of the picture. The site comprises a number of former Nissan Hut buildings, located mainly in two areas, one to the south of the site down here, and one to the north of the site down here. Detached two-story dwelling here, which is subject to the next application piece to consider tonight, and a single-story stable building, which is to the east of some of the Nissan Huts, just where the mouse is pointing now. There's a tarmac shared access road that runs throughout the site to the west of existing dwelling, following the mouse it goes, it's not very clear on the plan, but up there to allow access. The area of photo just gives you an idea of what the site is like, and also, as well as the buildings on the site, there's areas of grassland and tree cover. The site surroundings comprise common to the north and natural vegetation cover to the east and west. I think at this point, because I think it's quite important to this application, the concerns have been raised, just to show you where the location of the SPA, SAC and Triple SI are relative to the application site. Application site is surrounded, as you can read here, and within the dark blue area, which is located to the east, north and west, and that contains all those constraints. Turning to the site photos, on this slide, it shows photos of the existing huts to the south of the site, and they are all proposed for removal, and I think it's useful to have a look whilst we're on here. You can see how, where the mouse is showing, how the level of the land changes, and you can see the slope within, this image is there, and the applicant has proposed to use some of this change in topography to the benefit of their scheme. This is a view looking to the north of the site, showing the spread of development there. You've got the Nissan Huts in two groupings, and the ones, the left-hand side of the picture would form the area for unit three, the ones to the right-hand side, plus the stables to the right-hand side would form the area for unit two. Looking at what is proposed, I think first it's important to look at what is, where the existing spread of development is on the site. As I've already mentioned, you've got a cluster of development here with the Nissan Huts, I think there's six in this area, you've got the detached dwelling here, and then there's 13 Nissan Huts towards the north of the site up here, and the stables there. If you look at the middle plan, you can see the proposed site layout. Unit one in the grey, where I'm pointing now, the existing detached dwelling, the proposed garage for, which would serve the detached dwelling, there would be a rerouting of the accessway round to the east of the detached dwelling, but then joining the road up to the north. Unit two here in the location of the stables, and some of the Nissan Huts in unit, that's actually unit two, which way around was that? One of the other units is there, and if you look at there on the right-hand side, that plan shows the existing and proposed high standing on the site, the existing is the lighter grey, the proposed is the darker grey. Now, why it's quite useful to have these three plans together is that you can see that the proposed built form on the site is located very closely in the locations of the existing built form on the site, within the previously developed land. Unit one to the south, it's a four-bedroom unit, to have a double garage at low ground floor level and living accommodation at upper ground floor level. Unit two would be part single-story, part two-story, sort of lower ground floor level and upper ground floor level, five-bedroom dwelling, which included double garage and habitable accommodation at lower ground floor level, and an area of upper ground floor level accommodation to the eastern side of the house. And the other unit to the left, to the western side, that would be house three, four-bedroom dwelling with double garage and habitable accommodation at lower ground floor level, and habitable accommodation to the western side of the upper ground floor level. It's just another plan showing the proposed site layout. This plan shows the indicative elevations, however, as it's an outline application, appearance is one of the reserved matters. The proposal does, it does use contemporary design, green-planted roofs, and officers are satisfied that an acceptable design could be achieved at reserve matter stage should outline planning permission be granted. I think it's quite useful when looking at these elevations, although indicative, of the heights of the proposals, it's quite clear, if you're looking at the top dwelling, that is unit one, and you can see on the right-hand side that the proposed lower ground floor level to form the garage is lower down than the left-hand side of the dwelling. The unit in total would have a height of, maximum height of 5.69 metres, but the single-story height above the land on the right-hand side would only be 3.4 metres. And again, whilst within house two, which is the second one down, you've got a two-story section to the right-hand side as you see it, which would be 4.37 metres high, but the single-story height is only 3.4, and that's to do with the changes in the land, and you've got the same thing again for unit three. I think this is actually probably shown the clearest of all, where you can see that it is, where I'm pointing, cut down into the land to make that space, and so it would have a maximum height of 5.38 metres, but the single-story height on the left-hand side is only 3.3 metres. I think that's very useful information. The existing heights of the units on the land range from 3.3 metres to 4.2 metres. Unit two, which is a little one to the north of the site, is 2.6 metres, but that's an exception to the rest of them. This just shows some indicative floor plans, but that would be something that would be determined at reserve matter stage. Moving on to the foul drainage strategy, this plan shows that the existing site is served by a septic tank, this would be removed as part of the proposal and replaced with a new foul water system designed specifically for the site. The new system would serve the existing house and three proposed dwellings. It would comprise a package treatment plant, cistern, which would be located centrally within the site in the red-marked area, to maximise the distance from the SAC and Triple SI. Foul water would be pumped from the two dwellings on the lower ground to the treatment plant. The treated water would flow from the plant through a series of beds to reduce nutrient levels and phosphate concentrations within the water, and would then flow out into a drainage bed to soak away into the ground. In the event for power or system failure, there is a backup cesspool to accommodate seven days emergency storage, a backup generator and a lower pumping station with emergency capacity for five-day storage. And the applicant has also proposed that the long-term maintenance of this treatment plant could be secured by a Section 106 agreement, and a management company could be set up to fund and maintain it in perpetuity. Moving on to the determining issues, previously, permission has been refused for five dwellings on the site under WA 2015 1198. The differences with this scheme is that this is an outline scheme, and it is for a reduced number of dwellings, only three dwellings, with, including access layout and scale, with reserve matters being the appearance and landscaping. Also, on the previous scheme, the dwellings were concentrated in a grouping to the north of the site, and whereas currently you've got two to the north of the site and one to the south of the site. In terms of highways considerations, the application site has lawful planning uses for class B1 and B8. The County Highway Authority considers the methodology which has been used to estimate the existing vehicular movements to be reasonable. The assessment considers the potential trip generation of the site, not the level of activity currently taking place on the site. The County Highway Authority has undertaken an independent assessment of the likely proposed vehicular movements for the residential use, and advises that this could amount to a possible 24 movements per day. County Highway Authority is satisfied that the proposal for three dwellings would not result in a material increase in vehicular movements compared to this lawful use. Subject to the imposition of conditions, officers raise no material concern in this regard. Turning to the location of development, the proposer would introduce dwellings in an isolated area, in that the site is not close to a defined settlement area, and the area is not well-served by public transport. However, having regarded the existing buildings on site and their uses, officers consider that the proposed use for three dwellings would not be any more harmful than the existing use which would be lost. Officers are therefore of the view that there are very special circumstances in this instance in respect of paragraph 55 of the MPPF. The loss of the existing use, officers are of the view that the site could not be described as suitably located commercial land. It is a remote and isolated location, away from public transport links and amenities. As such, no concern is raised with regard to the loss of existing uses. In terms of Greenbelt, AMB and AGLV, the proposal would result in a reduction of footprint of built form on the site. In addition, there will be reductions in both floor area and volume, thereby reducing the overall spread of development within the site. The proposed built form would be located on areas of previously developed land, and in officers' view, there would be no greater impact on the openness of the Greenbelt than the existing development. Officers consider that the layout and scale of the development would be acceptable, and that whilst reserved matters, an acceptable appearance in landscaping could be put forward at a later stage. In officers' view, subject to conditions, the proposal would respect the character and beauty of the AMB and AGLV, and conditions have been recommended by the AMB adviser. The proposal would result in a loss of some trees on site, but subject to the imposition of conditions to secure protection for trees proposed to be retained, officers raise no material concern in this regard. Officers don't consider the proposal would result in material harm to neighbouring residential In terms of the effect on the SPA and the SAC, the site lies within the 400-metre buffer zone of the Weldon Heath SPA and SAC, and is adjacent to the Triple SI. Natural England raises no objection to the proposal with regard to the impact on the SPA and Triple SI. However, an objection has been raised with regard to the potential effect on the SAC. Evidence has not been provided to give certainty that there would be no hydrological connection between the development and the SAC. In the absence of such information, it is considered that the proposal could present a significant risk to the habitats of the SAC, and officers consider that this to amount to reason for refusal. Just in conclusion, whilst there would be acceptable elements to the scheme, in light of the outstanding objection regarding the impact on the SAC, officers consider that the proposal would not accord with the development plan, and the officer recommendation is therefore, as set out on page 66 of the agenda report, that permission be refused on the likely significant effects upon the special interests of the adjacent SAC. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Flo. Could you turn your lap, thank you very much. A bit of a marathon there, can I just remind members that we are looking at an outline application here for access layout and scale, and that's what we're looking at tonight? Now, I've got various public speakers, but obviously with three applications, if you don't wish to come and use your full four minutes for each one, please just let me know. So the first person I have to speak down, down to speak is Richard Nobbs, do you wish to speak on this one? I think Emma has explained, you get your four minutes from when you actually press the large button, so you're in charge.
This is an extremely sensitive site that protrudes deep into the flashes of Frenchman Common, which is Triple SI, SAC and SPA. Eighty percent of the site, including all three houses and the sewage treatment scheme, are within the 50-metre impact risk zone, protecting the surrounding area. Natural England say any development is unacceptable without very special reason. Whilst we recognise the case officer is recommending refusal, objectors believe it is important to refuse the application on multiple grounds rather than just one. We challenge some of the issues the case officer appears to have accepted. Firstly, the harm from the site's lawful use is grossly overstated. For many years, the site has been used for low-intensity storage by those nearby, including local businesses. Whilst the developer wants to intensify the use, he's prevented from doing so by the nature of the units and the unsuitable access road. Secondly, the previously developed land claimed has also been overstated. The proposed houses and their curtages go onto undeveloped greenfield areas. The curtilage of the existing units is set out on their certificates of lawful use, which tightly defines the PDL. This was used to refuse application 2015/1233. Councillors should consider that application and the certificate of lawful use, which clearly shows houses two and three spill onto undeveloped land. In addition, the manège is loose surface, two of the units remain agricultural use, and some of the land has blended back into the landscape, so these areas are specifically excluded from PDL. Thirdly, the single-track access is inherently unsafe, as acknowledged by the Highways Authority. The traffic analysis compares commercial storage with residential properties in built-up areas rather than a rural location. Trix specifically warns against this error, so the applicant's analysis is not fit for purpose. The previous owner made a statutory declaration that all the units created 12 movements a week, and not the 40 to 79 movements a day erroneously projected by the traffic statement. Fourthly, if Waverley are monitoring the number of new houses within 400 metres of the SPA because of the recognised harm, then why would you allow any new houses within the 50-metre impact risk zone, where any new housing does the maximum amount of damage and which cannot be mitigated against? Councillors should refuse this application on multiple grounds, including the irreparable harm to the Triple SI, SAC and SPA from sewage, household and garden chemicals, along with pet predation. Building within the impact risk zone is unacceptable. Two, unsustainable development by isolated housing in the Greenbelt. The houses and their curtages extended outside the PDL, very special circumstances have not been shown. Three, the proposals are contrary to the local plan, village design statements and local needs. Four, the light, noise and associated activity in this dark and tranquil area will affect the openness of the Greenbelt compared to the low-intensity storage which the developer is unable to intensify. And finally, the additional traffic, where the Highways Agency has previously said the junction is unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Nobbs, both for what you said and for your timing. I now have down either or both, Mr Crossley and Mr Wood from Chert and Frenchman Parish Councils, do one or both of you wish to come? Once again, you have four minutes from when you press the large button.
I think this is one they're both sharing.
You are going?
We are going to be sharing, Chairman.
Right, would you like to come down then, that's Mr Woods, isn't it? And then if you, yes, if you sit next, you can just pass the microphone over and not lose any time. I don't mean pass it, I mean flick it, it moves.
Before I start, Chairman, I'd just like to say I'd like to make a short statement in relation to all three applications, and not make three separate.
No, that's absolutely fine, I think we'll probably be grateful that you do. So, yeah, so as I say, between you, you have four minutes from when you first press the large button.
Chert Parish Council's objections to the current applications in relation to Borough House Farm are well-known by Waverley Borough Council Planning Department, the developers and the local objectors. In a nutshell, we have concerns over the inevitable increased traffic from and to Jumps Road, the proposed design of properties which are not conducive with the Chert Village Design Statement, and the possible damage to the flashes being a Triple SI by the proximity of proposed buildings and the effect of possible foul drainage and effluent disposal upon it. We are also aware that Natural England have grave concerns about possible damage to the flashes. We are also aware, having carried out a recent housing needs survey, that there is no requirement for such a development as proposed within the parish of Chert. Indeed, Chert has already exceeded the stated housing requirements contained within Waverley's Local Plan Part One. We have been led to believe by Waverley Council that the combination of Triple SIs, the Surrey Hills area of Australian natural beauty and the Greenbelt... Hills area of outstanding natural beauty and the Greenbelt are effectively sacrosanct for Chert. Chert Parish Council is committed to taking all steps to ensure that any future development complies fully with the Chert Design Statement and the restrictions posed by the Greenbelt, sites of special scientific interest and the Surrey Hills area of outstanding natural beauty. I would urge the committee to take all these factors into account when considering their decision.
Thank you very much. Yes, we just carry straight on.
I've been asked to read out on behalf of Frenchham Parish Council a statement submitted by Dick Bills, the chairman, on oblique oh nine two eight. We have previously objected to this application on the grounds of inappropriate development in an unsustainable location and we maintain this position. With regard to the foul drainage proposals, we share Natural England's concerns about the continuing lack of certainty over the extent of the hydrological connections between the proposed development and the adjacent flashes' local nature reserve, which lies within both the special area of conservation and Frenchham Civil Parish. Without such certainty, there is clearly a risk of consequent adverse effects on the ecological integrity of this site, which is heavily protected by local, national and international designations. As Natural England have indicated, further information is required to enable determination of the significance of these potential effects, so as to enable the scope of any mitigation measures to be determined. Our council therefore supports Natural England's application of the precautionary principle under the Habitat Regulations two thousand and seventeen, which requires that conservation objectives should prevail where such uncertainty exists. Until such times, it's demonstrated that effluent discharges from the proposed drainage system to the soca ways will meet the technical standards required by Natural England for the proposed eighty-year lifetime of the scheme. We cannot support the principle of development sought in this outline application. We therefore maintain our objection to this application and support the officer's recommendation that it be refused.
Thank you, Mr Woods. Mr Wood. And finally, we have Mr Robert Rummy. Thanks very much, who is in support of the scheme. By now, we've probably got the hang of it, but four minutes from when you press the large button.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, councillors, Borrow House Farm has a planning history. The earlier five-house scheme was refused and after that, My Firm, which had no previous design involvement, and taking our rather unusual landscape-led approach to these matters, was given a free hand to design an appropriate scheme. We decided not to appeal the refused five-house scheme, preferring to work methodically through the issues which were Greenbelt, AONB, SSSI, SPA, SAC and access, working through those patiently with your officers. But we also noted that the site could be significantly improved. The Second World War huts and the Boiler House, and there is a lawful reuse, of course, for the huts, these buildings are unattractive. There are large areas of tarmac and concrete hard standings, there's a sand school with flood lighting and a cottage whose sewage system is not ideal, shall we say. The site's landscape has not in the past been treated with the respect that its location perhaps deserved and overall, it's in pretty poor shape. This application is in outline, but it does contain a great deal of detail for reserved matters later. Originally, of course, we included the cottage in the scheme, but we were advised to treat this as a separate application and that's how it's treated with this meeting. Our approach was to work with the officers to satisfy the requirements of the Greenbelt, maintaining openness and hopefully aiming at an exemplary standard of design, keeping within the area of the previously developed land and buildings. The heathland landscape is to be extended into the site, round and over the new single-story buildings. The three new homes are no higher and usually lower than the existing buildings and they fit very carefully into the landscape, the landform, the changes of level and the trees. The council has agreed that they have a reduced impact on the Greenbelt and in fact, the area of hard standings is quite significantly smaller than there is there now. The Surrey Hills AONB has no objection to the scheme, feeling its scale and design is appropriate in the AONB, conserving and enhancing the AONB. Natural England have no objection on ecological grounds, accepting that our approach of reforestation and reintroduction of heathland could enrich the site. The county has no objection on highway grounds, accepting that the traffic from three houses plus the cottage would be less than the commercial scheme alternative. This responsible application, born eighteen months ago after extensive pre-application discussions, is sensitive to its location and has no objection from the statutory authorities except Natural England in a narrow capacity, protecting groundwater from theoretical contamination. Now, we've made much progress with Natural England with a proposed four-stage sewage treatment process and there is agreement on the principles. They're pleased that previous advice has been incorporated, but they want more detail on dilution and certainty. The alternative commercial scheme has been discussed, but we feel this is a far better use of the land, significantly reducing volume, traffic and environmental effects. This high-quality scheme would be beneficial to the site, its amenity and local residents. Chairman, may I ask, please, in the light of the refusal, that we allow a two-month deferral for us to assemble the scientific evidence necessary to satisfy Natural England?
Thank you, Mr Rummy. We can put that into the debate as we go forward. Thank you very much indeed. Councillors, over to you. councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. I've been involved in this development now for a while with my constituents and I support the officer's recommendation to refuse. I mean, it's assumed just because there have been, there are a number of huts there, that, you know, and it is previously developed land, that something can be done. Well, something may be done or may not be done. It doesn't actually need to be done at all. It could be returned to natural heathland and woods, which is what has happened, which is the surrounding area is currently consists of, especially as so much of it is so adjacent to the Weldon Heath Spa. Of course, the land does slope down towards the north and that is also the boundary of National Trust and the flashes, the flashes which are really quite a special area which is not widely known. But it is important, obviously, that all of that is reserved and preserved, rather, and the, as Natural England have said, they're not satisfied with the potential from the sewage proposals. There is actually no need for these properties at all. Chert has an allocation, as we said, in the local plan part one of fifteen homes. Of that, six have already been built and there are ten which have permission, so they already have a surplus of one and we're only now three years into, sorry, four years into the local plan. So there's fifteen years to go where houses that can be situated in the village as windfalls can be accommodated. As the officers have said, this is an isolated location and in a rural area, so I would not support this application and would support the officer's refusal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams. councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with my colleague basically. However, can I ask the officers, with regard to the reasons for refusal, to consider what the first speaker said, because he seems to have some very good points there, maybe I misunderstood, but it does seem to me that we can refuse his application for a number of reasons. Perhaps they could advise why they're not including those. Thank you.
Officers, would you like to come back at this point?
I mean, it's all set out in the officer's report. Was there a specific consideration that you'd like me to clarify?
Well, the first speaker really highlighted the issues that they're concerned about and although the report is comprehensive, perhaps, you know, we could answer his queries.
So the first point that the first speaker raised was with regard to the harm to the SPA, SAC and SSSI. The one reason for refusal that we have recommended on this application is in relation to the SAC. Natural England have confirmed that they have no concerns with regard to the impact on the SPA or the SSSI, so they are satisfied that the proposal wouldn't have an unacceptable impact on those particular designations. In relation to isolated housing, officers do consider that it is isolated, however, they also consider that the existing use on the site is isolated as well. And so whilst there would be harm from the proposed free dwellings in terms of their isolated location, that is outweighed by the existing use on the site. Thirdly, in relation to Greenbelt, officers do consider that this would be, there would be a reduction in built form on the site and as such, the harm to the openness of the Greenbelt would be reduced over the existing situation. In relation to light, noise and associated activity, it's not considered that free residential dwellings would be harmful in this respect and officers have also had regard to the existing lawful use of the site, which is for B eight and B one and could have other harmful impacts in terms of noise and associated activity. And finally, in relation to the additional traffic, the County Highway Authority have assessed the proposal in relation to the lawful use of the site and considers that free dwellings would generate less traffic movements than the lawful use could do on the site. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Louise. As you say, it is all set out in the agenda, I think, very, very clearly what the issues are on this site. And certainly, the site visit was very useful, again, just to firm those up. councillor Mulliner.
Thank you, Chairman. I refer colleagues to pages forty-six and forty-seven of the agenda papers. I think a useful starting point is to look at the reasons why the previous application for five units was refused and nine reasons are set out. Having had the benefit of visiting the site myself and speaking to officers yesterday, I think I can understand why they feel that the considerable efforts the applicants have made to change the design and the location and reducing the number of the proposed dwelling units has led to a change in view as far as reasons one, the Greenbelt, reasons three, the AONB and reason four, the AGLV. I think all these are concerned with the impact upon openness and I was particularly interested to have it confirmed that the manège, which is the area of open ground to the north of the Nissen huts, which has an interesting position in planning law at the moment, it is generally regarded as previously developed land, but it's very open, previously developed land, so anyone who tries to build on it may, in a sense, succeed in regarding it as PDL but will almost certainly lose by impacting on the openness of the Greenbelt. But the applicant has taken care not to do that and so the form of the buildings is placed very much on the distinctly unattractive Nissen huts. The other reasons which are worth mentioning, reason five, to do with the impact on the highway network, I can understand why there could be interesting arguments about whether the potential lawful use and the proposed use would give rise to greater or lesser traffic movements, but I can't see there's much in it one way or the other and it certainly wouldn't be a reason for refusal. As far as reasons seven and nine are concerned, I gather that the Natural England is now happy about the SPA but not about the SAC, which is the remaining reason officers are putting forward for refusal, which is reason eight. And I didn't quite understand why flood risk was an issue in this particular site. Apparently, it's all built on sand. I think it's that fact which leads to the hydrological risk of seepage from the sewage works into the rest of the SAC. But I think we do have a problem with reasons two and six. Reason two is to do with isolated homes in the countryside. If you drive to the site, you see, as you drive down, the rather narrow and very rutted access road, I think there are three, if not four, large dwellings there and therefore you might think that therefore, what would one more or three more matter? But of course, planning values change over time and we can all think of occasions and situations in our area where you ask, who on earth allowed that? But of course, times change and now we have the MPPF, paragraph fifty-five, and I am unable to share the officer's views that that in some way is circumvented. If you look at paragraph fifty-five, it seems to me quite clear that it discourages local planning authorities from granting permission for isolated homes in the countryside, which we all agree these are, and it gives four exceptions: the rural worker, heritage assets, basically barn conversions and superb new buildings of exceptional quality. Well, none of these qualify and I think because local planning authorities are frequently criticised for not being consistent, we would have great problems in justifying not applying paragraph fifty-five in such a clear case as this, where the buildings are clearly very isolated indeed, and then trying to apply it somewhere else. So although I have great sympathy for what the applicant's tried to do, unfortunately, he's rather stuck by the fact that these homes are proposed to be at the end of a long track in a very rural area and it seems to me that paragraph fifty-five is giving this council, like every other LPA, a very clear steer that it shouldn't support such applications. I also look at paragraph six, or reason six, which makes the very sensible point, which has certainly been raised by inspectors in other recent appeals, and is that don't encourage the use of the car. Well, there's no way in which anyone living in these proposed dwellings could communicate with the outside world or go shopping or go to work, except by the use of the car, which in many ways just adds weight to the sense of paragraph fifty-five. So my feeling is that not only do I support the officer's recommendation for refusal, but I think it's important that we should add in effectively reasons two and six from the previous refusal to give the full colour of the reasons why this particular application, rather sadly, because I have no doubt that it will be an improvement over the current very messy and untidy situation. It's not one I can possibly support and if I have a second, I will be proposing those two conditions, those two reasons, I beg your pardon, are added to the reasons for refusal. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, councillor Mulliner. I get the impression that we're moving rapidly towards the recommendation with a view to firming up the reasons if we can. Does anybody else wish to speak before I ask the officers to help us do that? councillor King.
Madam Chairman, I'm very happy to support the second councillor Mulliner's proposal.
Thank you. Officers, would you like to tell us about extra reasons?
Of course. Paragraph fifty-five does restrict isolated homes in the countryside and it is a matter of judgement to come to the conclusion as to whether there are special circumstances within that paragraph to allow the isolated homes. In relation to the specific reasons for refusal, reason six was recommended previously by the County Highway Authority, of which we would not have their support for any appeal. However, it does have some points in it which sort of add weight to the second reason for refusal and what I would recommend is to incorporate some of those points into reason two, which would be the specific conflict with paragraph fifty-five itself.
Could I, I read...
Could I, I read policy ST1 of our new local plan, which appears to contain one strand which makes it clear that reliance on the car is not encouraged. To me, that would be a valid separate reason.
Right, officers all madly looking up detail. Have you got a reason? Oh, a quick answer from Louise, right.
Yes, of course, ST1 says that. But if I can just offer some advice, I think the council's position would be strengthened by incorporating it into one rather than focusing on the transport issues. The reason being is if we don't have sort of the expert highway authority's support, then an inspector is highly likely to disagree with us. However, if we frame the reason for refusal in terms of the isolated location with these additional elements, I feel that we can make a much, much stronger case.
I'm happy to take the advice, Chairman.
Thank you. So Louise, do you have something that we can add to the reason for refusal that would do what the councillors want to do, but would also strengthen? At the moment, you can all see what the recommendation is on page sixty-six.
Okay. I would recommend the proposal by reason of its unsustainable location, where there is no practical public transport option and where there is no street lighting or footpath provision in the vicinity of the application site, would result in new isolated homes in the countryside. No special, well, the special circumstances put forward by the applicant would not outweigh this. The proposal would therefore fail to accord with paragraph fifty-five of the NPPF 2012.
Right, members, are you quite happy with that? I won't attempt to re, I can write pretty quickly, but not that quickly. But basically, it's by reason of the unsustainable location, there'd be new isolated homes in the countryside, contrary to para fifty-five, plus obviously the original reason for refusal. Is everyone contented that I moved to the refusal then? So the recommendation, I should say, the recommendation is that permission be refused for the following reason. Insufficient information has been submitted to demonstrate that there would not be a likely significant effect upon the special interests of the adjacent SAC, in conflict with policy NE1 of the Local Plan Part One, 2018, retained policy D1 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, 2002, and the Conservation of Habitat and Species Regulations, 2010, as amended, and paragraph one one eight of the National Planning Policy Framework, 2012. And in addition, we're adding in, oh, is that what I'm understanding, by reason of the, the second reason is by reason of the unsustainable location, the application would result in new isolated homes in the countryside, contrary to para fifty-five.
That's the gist of it, yes.
You're very polite, Louise. You're going to put it into sort of much better words, I know that. councillor Adams, you wish to come back?
Yes, could we possibly add another reason, which is that it's not in conformity with the Chert design statement and it's not required in the housing numbers for Chert?
If I could just refer members to the policy in relation to housing numbers, they are set out as a minimum and it wouldn't be a sustainable reason for refusal to refuse an application because the particular sort of settlement area had already met their housing numbers. So unfortunately, I don't think that would be defendable appeal. I'm not aware of anything in the Chert design statement that would relate to either of the two reasons for refusal that have been read out. But if members are happy, then I'm happy to take that away. And if there is anything in there that can relate to those two reasons for refusal, then I'm happy to add that into those.
I think that's fair enough. The other two are clear sort of policies, so we understand what we're dealing with. I think the design statement, we'd have to check to make sure that there is something specific that relates to this site. So, members, could we turn again to page sixty-six and the recommendation? The recommendation is that the permission be refused for the reasons we've already stated, and there are two informatives as well on page sixty-six and sixty-seven. So could I see, please, all those in favour of refusing permission?
All right, that's unanimous.
In that case, permission is refused. Could we move on then to the next item, which is A3 WA 2017 0913, at the same address, Borough House Farm. This time it's the erection of a rear extension and porch to the existing cottage. And it's Flo again to introduce it. Thank you, Flo.
Thank you, Chairman. So for the erection of a rear extension and porch to the existing detached two-storey dwelling on the site, you can, obviously the same site we've just been discussing. The actual site location plan, site location for this site is the red area you can see in the centre of the location plan. These photos show the dwelling at the moment. It has already been previously extended to add the conservatory, which you can see on the right-hand side of the top photo, and a first-floor extension on the left-hand side of the first photo. And these plans, the green shows what has already been added to it. Looking at the proposed block plan, the proposals include a porch to the front, on the right-hand side and to the left-hand side, a two-story extension, the width of the dwelling. And these proposals, these images show exactly what it would be like. It is a large extension creating an extra gable, but officers consider it to be a design in keeping with the existing dwelling. These floor plans show the size of the proposed extension. The extensions are shaded in yellow, just to be clear. Termining to the determining issues, in terms of highways access and parking, membership would note there would be sufficient space on site for off-street car parking in line with council standards, and the County Highway Authority has raised no objection to the proposal. In terms of effect on the SPA, SAC and SSSI, members should note that Natural England have raised an objection as insufficient information has been submitted to demonstrate that there will not be a likely significant effect on the SAC from pollution from the new sewerage system, and that's the same reasons for the previous scheme. Whilst the site is on a woodland site, the proposal is located a sufficient distance from any nearby ancient woodland. In terms of biodiversity, the council's ecology consultant, Sirey Wildlife Trust, is satisfied that the proposal would not have an unacceptable impact on ecology. The matters of judgment, the first one, green belt, officers consider the proposal would result in a disproportionate addition to the original dwelling and would therefore be inappropriate green belt development. The applicants have put forward those special circumstances that whilst the proposal would be disproportionate, when taking into consideration the demolition of the huts proposed as part of the previous application considered, the proposal would result in an improvement in openness to the site. However, these also fall outside of the application site. And as the application which includes the demolition of these buildings has just been refused, very limited weight can be attached to this, and officers do not consider that it amounts to very special circumstances. Officers consider the design to be appropriate and in keeping with the existing dwelling and as the proposal is well separated, officers consider the proposal would not result in any harm to neighbouring residential amenity. Moving to the recommendation, officers recommend that permission is refused as per reasons one and two set out on page eighty-five of the Agenda Report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Flo. As with the previous application, we do have public speaking on offer. I would ask, please, that we don't repeat too much, and that also applies to members when we come on to looking at this application, because obviously a lot of the issues are similar. So once again, Mr Nobbs, you have four minutes if you wish to take up your full allocation.
Thank you. We agree that the application should be refused for the reasons proposed. We would add the site of the sewage treatment is in the impact risk zone, and that's completely unacceptable. There are known to be bats at the house and associated outbuildings. The bat surveys carried out in 2014 were recognised last year by the applicant's advisers, Ecology Solutions, as being at the end of their accepted shelf life and needing updating. So we think that there are still some ecological issues. We agree a 240% increase in the size is disproportionate, and these extensions are considerably larger than 2015 stroke 2173, which was refused, then appealed against, and the appeal was dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Nobbs. An example to everyone. Mr Crossley, do you wish to speak on this one? You did your overarching speak, thank you very much indeed. Mr Ramey, do you wish to come and add anything to this? Right, members, so it's straight over to you. councillor Adams?
I support the officer's proposal to refuse.
councillor Mulliner, do you wish to strengthen them?
No, no, I just wanted to add that I was very interested in the applicant's argument, because it might come back later. But I have to say, I find it difficult to accept at first instance. This is a completely different building. There's no doubt that if the applicant were successful in getting planning permission at some time in the future, then almost certainly the three other buildings would be in different ownership. And then the idea that you could justify doing something to this building because of what you'd done to the other buildings or you'd created them seems strange. This is simply a very large extension in the green belt onto an existing building, and it should be seen in that light. And I think that the officer's reason for refusal, number one, is entirely correct. And I do not see how you can basically extend an argument based upon three other sites you might sell to other people could possibly justify anything you're doing to the site you're keeping in your own ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak, or shall we move straight to the recommendation on page eighty-five? The recommendation is that permission be refused. The proposal by reason of its disproportionate size, bulk, mass and floor area would result in a disproportionate addition to the additional dwelling, original dwelling, and as such, will constitute inappropriate green belt development. No very special circumstances would outweigh the harm to the green belt or any other harm. The proposal therefore would conflict with policy RE2 of the Local Plan Part One, 2018, retained policy RD2 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, 2002, and paragraphs eighty-seven to ninety of the NPPF 2012. Like the previous one, insufficient information has been submitted to demonstrate that there would not be a likely significant effect upon the special interests of the adjacent SAC, in conflict with policy NE1 of the Local Plan, again, Part One, 2018, retained policy D1 of the Waverley Borough Council Local Plan, 2002, Conservation of Habitat and Species Regulations, 2010 as amended, and paragraph one one eight of the National Planning Policy Framework. So for those reasons, and with the two informative, the recommendation is that permission be refused. Can I see all those in favour of refusing, please?
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. So permission has been refused on that application. Moving on, we're really getting into déjà vu now, aren't we? Again, we're at Borough House Farm, but this time we have Louise Jandell, who's going to introduce the alterations to the elevation of unit ten.
Thank you, Chairman. Members will remember this one from last month's committee, where I presented this item, and it was deferred for members to undertake a site visit, which was carried out this morning. As a result, I'll keep the presentation brief. The site consists of a building which has a lawful B8 use, and the site is surrounded by other commercial buildings and free other residential properties in the vicinity. The wider area is rural in character. These photographs show the site and surroundings. Unit ten is this building on the site, which you'll see in the photographs. And as you can see, the alterations have already taken place. There are the other commercial buildings which you can see surrounding the site in the bottom photograph. This slide shows the elevations and the floor plans. The rubberised sheeting surrounding the building has been replaced, and the front elevation has been fitted with new glazing and a door. This replaced brickwork and a roller shuttered door, similar to what you saw on the surrounding buildings on site this morning. In conclusion, the proposal is considered to be appropriate green belt development. It has an acceptable design, has an acceptable impact on the AONB, and it doesn't result in material harm to residential amenities. The proposal does also not have an unacceptable impact on the SPA or SACs. The recommendation is therefore for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Louise. Once again, we do have names down for public speaking. Just let me know if you don't wish to speak. Right, Mr Nobbs, if you'd like to come forward.
The context of this application is clear, and whilst it may initially appear innocuous, it intensifies the use of the whole of Borough House Farm. The application therefore has a much wider impact. It will result in an increase in traffic and the number of people staying on site with the associated noise, light emitted and activity that affects the openness of the green belt in this tranquil location. It also increases activity in sewage within the 50-metre impact risk zone, where Natural England say it's inappropriate. Highways have said that this is not an appropriate site for commercial development. We challenge some of the points made. The benefit is for natural light within unit ten. However, this is a pretty insignificant benefit when compared to the harm to both the green belt and the adjacent SPA. This is not sustainable redevelopment, as it intensifies use at an unsuitable location. And thirdly, there appears to be a presumption that there will be no harm. However, we think that Waverley should take a precautionary approach, particularly for development within the impact risk zone and where bats and other protected species are known to be present. We're also concerned that the applicant has confirmed he will change the use of the unit under permitted development rights, so no further planning application will be required. Holes can be cut in the roof to allow light to emit from the translucent roof panels as well as the entire front of the building. Granting planning permission gives the green light for converting more of the eighteen other units in line with withdrawn application 2015, one, two one eight two. Finally, residents are concerned that the alterations to unit ten, and in particular alterations to the asbestos roof, may have been carried out unlawfully. The council should refuse this application on grounds including harm to the adjacent SPA, as is contrary to policy NE1, harm to the openness of the green belt, the marginal benefit of light is outweighed by the harm from intensification, very special circumstances have not been demonstrated, additional, three, additional traffic where the highways has confirmed the access is unsafe, four, this doesn't represent sustainable redevelopment of sites, contrary to policy EE1, and five, intensification at the site is contrary to policy IC5, where so-called bad neighbours are encouraged to move to Coxbridge. Thank you.
Sharp comment on that last statement. Right, if we move then to the next speaker, Mr Crossley, do you wish to speak on this side? Thank you very much. Mr Ramey, do you wish to come back and speak on this? Yes, certainly.
Chairman, councillors, this is a retrospective planning application for external alteration to the facade of commercial unit number ten. The site has poor visual quality, as we've seen, though it is adjacent to land of environmental sensitivity, and it's within the Surrey Hills AONB. The land contains these Second World War Nissen hut-type buildings, and a sand school, and flood lighting, concrete and tarmac hard standings, as we've seen. Previously, the site has been used as a mushroom farm, serviced by large vehicles. On this morning's site visit, you may have seen the seventeen World War units, one of which, unit ten, has been refurbished with this glass front. Now, this site has a certificate of lawful use, two of them in fact, granted in 2013 and 2014, for seventeen buildings, of which sixteen of the units could be used as B8, which is storage and distribution, and one as B1, which is light industrial. as B1, which is light industrial. Toilets could be provided by Portaloos, ancillary to the commercial units. This could be done without planning permission, but this retrospective application relates to unit ten where a glass front has been installed to show the unit off in the best light for commercial uses. There is interest in this unit from a tool hire company and there is demand for the space. The proposed alteration enhances the appearance of the building and we consider that these alterations do not harm the natural beauty of the area of outstanding natural beauty or the landscape character of the area of great landscape value. The nearest sensitive residential use is ninety-seven metres away and for these reasons, chairman, we request that the application be consented.
Thank you, Mr Ramey. Could I, before we start the debate, can you put the determining issues up again, just to remind us what we're looking at here, because this is a very different application from the previous two that we've looked at? Councillors, over to you. councillor Adams?
Yes, and it is obviously disappointing that the developer went ahead and did this before he actually applied for planning permission. I appreciate that is permitted, but it doesn't show goodwill in the first instance. This hut, I believe, is to accommodate a number of people. I'm not sure how many are expected to work in there, but that's what basically the front and the light are for. If we give permission for this retrospective development, then will we see the next one down the line going the same way? Can we put a condition on which says that this is the only one which can be converted? I'll leave that to the officers.
I think this was always going to be the issue, an issue, so could the officers help us out at the beginning? Thank you.
Unfortunately, that wouldn't be a reasonable condition to put on this application. However, they would require planning permission for any further works to any of the other buildings that we would have to assess if and when applications are submitted in relation to those. Thank you.
councillor Edwards? Oh, sorry, do you want to come back, councillor Adams, and then I'll take councillor?
Could we ask them to put in application before the work is done?
What we could do is put an informative on to that respect to remind them that they should be applying for planning permission before any works are carried out.
Thank you, Louise. councillor Edwards?
Thank you, chairman. Just a simple clarification here. Now, this glass-fronted building and translucent panels, whatever, this is really, surely they should have consulted with the habitat regulatory authorities before doing this because it really is a site of importance for habitats, particularly bats, et cetera, and it's bound to affect those, that habitat. There's no doubt about it. The lights will be on at half past four in the evening or four o'clock in the evening during the winter. So surely what they've done is unlawful. Am I right in thinking that? Or am I going over the top? Because, you know, I don't understand where we are on this.
We don't have any evidence that there was any damage done to protected species during the works, so it wouldn't be reasonable to refuse an application on that ground.
councillor Inchboard?
Maybe I've misunderstood something, but I thought the lawful use for these huts was storage, whereas it's very obvious that this particular one has already been converted into an office, which I would have thought is a change of use.
The lawful development certificate established the lawful use of the site as a mixture of B1 and B8 and office does fall within the B1 use class, B8 being for storage and distribution. So we are satisfied that they do have lawful use for this particular building as an office.
You know, our hands are tied very much with this change of use that the government's brought in. You know, there's so little we can do to stop some of these changes of use now. In fact, they're encouraged. So we have to be careful when we're making our decision that, you know, that we're not falling foul of the law either. councillor Mulliner?
Just, I think I understand the situation. I mean, it's actually a fiction that you are obliged to apply for planning permission. If you want to go and do something on your land, you can do it, but you run an awful risk, which is that if what you create or build is not compliant with planning policy, you can be told to take it down at great expense to yourself. So what sensible people do is to apply for planning permission first to make sure that they don't run that risk. But actually, if we are confronted with a situation where someone has done something, made an assumption that what they're doing is not contrary to planning policy, if their judgment is right, then we have no option but to grant retrospective permission. Am I right in my understanding?
That's absolutely correct.
Which member brings us perhaps to the recommendation unless anybody else wishes to speak on this? Would the officer, Louise, or anybody like to sum up for us?
In terms of the matters of judgment, officers consider that it would be acceptable in relation to the green belt, in relation to landscape character, visual amenity and in relation to the impact on residential amenity, and therefore our recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, Louise. Is everyone content that I moved to the recommendation? That subject conditions one to two and the informative one, permission is granted. Can I see all those, please, in favour of granting permission?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And those against?
One.
And abstentions?
Two.
Thank you very much. So permission for that change of use is granted. Right, moving on then. Is somebody leaving us? Flo, have you done your work for this evening?
I've got some windows.
Right, moving on then to item seven five, A4. Oh, here we go with the, just wait for the seats, the noisiest seats in Waverley. Right, moving on then to item A4 WA twenty seventeen two four double zero, the land at Tilford Green Nursery, Tilford Road in Tilford. And it's Chris Turner who's going to introduce this one for us, thank you.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the update sheet, which makes some updates to the report and a additional reason for refusal in relation to infrastructure contributions. The site's located to the west of Tilford Road and measures one point seven hectares. The site's accessed by an existing access which is shared with a residential dwelling known as the malt house located to the north of the site. The site comprises numerous structures of various forms, including metal-framed polytunnels and sheds. There are rows of tree sumps remaining on the site, particularly towards the western side. The site is bordered by dense tree cover to the majority of the boundaries, with the exception of the south-east corner where the site adjoins Tilford Institute. There's the aerial photograph and the proposed block plan. Photograph one on the top left shows a site looking west. Within this photograph, you can see the remains of the polytunnels on site. Photograph two on the top right shows the south-east boundary whereby the site adjoins the Tilford Institute. Photograph three on the bottom left shows a view of the site from Tilford Green. Photograph four in the bottom right is looking north-west towards the northern boundary, beyond which is the malt house. Photograph five is looking east towards Tilford Green. Just to go back to the update sheet, this photograph shows the fence and trees which the applicant has informed is now both under his ownership. Photograph six in the top right shows a said structure located towards the northern boundary. And photograph seven is from the western side of the site looking eastwards, where you can see the remains of the nursery trees on site. The schemes for four units, of which plots one, two and three would be of an identical design. Plot four has a marginally different design to it. The masses of principle and technical opinion are, the masses of principle and technical opinion relate to the location of development. The proposal is located within close proximity to existing services and is not considered to be isolated. The loss of the existing use. Officers are satisfied that the lawful use of the site is from the agricultural nursery which specialised in conifer trees. The proposal would not result in the loss of the best and most versatile agricultural land and would not undermine the viability of any remaining agricultural holding. Therefore, there's no objection raised by us to its loss. Impacts on the green belt. Officers do not consider the site to be previously developed as in accordance with the definition of the MPPF and therefore the proposal would be inappropriate green belt development. In relation to affordable housing, there's no affordable housing proposed on site. Highways, it's considered that the traffic movement generated by residential development on site could be accommodated without a harmful impact on highway safety. Owing to the scale of the proposals, the proposal would be unlikely to result in a materially harmful impact on the SAC. In relation to flood risk, insufficient information has been provided by the applicant. The masses of judgment relate to impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity and impact on the conservation area. In conclusion, officers consider that the proposal for four dwellings in this location would constitute inappropriate development in the green belt.
Thank you, Chris. I think we just have one, sorry. Sorry, I'd hate to cut you off in mid-sentence, I wouldn't be so rude. Right, as far as I can see, we just have one public speaker for this. Is anybody from the town and parish here in place of Mr Relf? In which case, could I ask Mr Birch to come forward and address the committee? I think by now you've probably got it, but four minutes from when you press the large button.
We very much believe that special circumstances can exist within common sense terms due to the unusual proximity of a commercial nursery to the village green, school and village hall. It is an opportunity to reduce any potential commercial impact on the village by locking in a low-density residential approval, which clearly defines the land for generations. There has been support from a number of people, some unrepresented and some publicly silent, in that this application creates a far improved option over the present situation as well as any future commercial activity. With respect to the design being repetitive with a harmful impact on the character of the surrounding area, we are only talking about four houses of similar but flexible elevation designs over four acres, which cannot really have the same repetitive concerns to, say, twenty houses. They are high-quality oak-framed houses from border oak which do blend with many local designs, not least the malt house next door, itself an oak-framed house. The NPPF is a package which has to take an overview with each individual application having specific factors which impact on the day-to-day realities. Many of the comments and observations made to the council whilst referring to the NPPF in their objections still accept that the site can be developed residentially. It isn't the case that the application has no support, either in its specific form or in general. In some cases, silence on the issue offers support. The issue of flooding is partly mute. The site is five metres above the river, which means that there is no possibility of it flooding. The land has never flooded. If it did, the barley mow would be underwater. References to the site flooding in the past relate to when the nursery and the neighbouring malt house were one property, meaning the malt house garden flooded. We have submitted a flood risk analysis report which indicates the site is safe. Surface water would be mitigated within permeable landscaping and soakaways. The committee will know that this isn't the first approach we have made for residential planning approval. What we have done is taken on board the objections to the previous application and tried to create something which meets many of the concerns. No application is going to make everyone happy, but we hope that what we have presented can be seen as very acceptable. We do respectfully ask the committee to look on this application favourably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Birch. We have an appeal decision previously on this site, which obviously forms part of your determination. Members? councillor Adams?
Yes, the previous application for ten bungalows was generally considered inappropriate in the village and it covered a much, much larger area of built form. That was rejected and failed on appeal, as you mentioned. This, as you can see, is a greatly reduced number of properties. I think there are still some issues with this particular development, but it is a great improvement on the previous one and I think the developer has listened to much of what was said. It is very difficult, though, to argue in favour of this one having just argued the case the other way in respect of Borough Hill Farm. And I can see that at the moment, I don't think this does qualify for development because of its position in the conservation area, the green belt and the AOMB. But I do think that with perhaps some changes, a slightly more flexible solution could come forward, which would be acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Adams? Would any other member like to, councillor Inchboard?
Well, I really do think that this is a site that's crying out for something to happen to it. Almost anything is better than what's there at the moment. I think the applicant has really shot himself in the foot by proposing three identical houses and only one, a unique one. I think had he come in with a more varied palette of design, it would have been more acceptable. Unfortunately, as things stand, it is green belt land and the, and policy is quite clear that any development would be inappropriate. I just really wish somebody could get this land declared not green belt and then we could do something sensible with it. Perhaps that's something that the applicant should consider. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Inchboard. I think you summed up our thoughts, or many of our thoughts from this morning's site visit. councillor Round?
Thank you, madam chair. I hesitate to take a different view to the inspector who disallowed the appeal before by saying it's not previously by saying it's not previously developed land, and I have heard how inspector's decisions on those issues can vary widely. So I am going to say, hmm, it's terrible, the present state, and if the developer or us doesn't do anything about it, it could live on like this for another 20 years and be a blot on the landscape. I think the houses proposed by the developer are remarkably good. I agree, it would be nice to ask him to vary the design just a little. Maybe a condition could be put that expresses that view. But otherwise, I think I would be tempted to say we're lucky to have a development proposed that is as attractive as this for a pretty hideous piece of land. I'd support it.
I mean, I have to say, I mean, I have no problem disagreeing with inspectors, but we do leave ourselves open to challenge if we are inconsistent on our decision-making, and I think councillor Adams summed that up with these two applications tonight. We have to be consistent, that's reasonable, that's fair, and we cannot just select any particular site on a whim, as it were, because, you know, we will be unreasonable. So that's my only warning to you, councillor Round.
May I just come back on that point? I appreciate the similarities, but also there are significant differences. This is not in many ways the same as the other site, which is quite isolated. This is not isolated, it's right bang next to the centre of the village. And it's different rubbish that is spread all over the fields. I wouldn't like to clear up either of these sites, but I think this one is more appropriate to being developed than the isolated one that you referred to.
Thank you, councillor Round. councillor Mulliner?
Thank you, chairman. I'll start off with asking a question. Page 112 and 113 deal with flood risk. Having spent many meetings where this has been discussed, I am very interested to understand the difference between the local gentleman who was convinced this was not a flood risk zone, and the environment agency who clearly think that it's in flood zone two and three, and therefore is something we would not prefer to build on when we have other sites in flood zone one we should prefer. Having always felt that flooding was one of the worst things you could allow to happen, I am, as I say, distinctly interested and puzzled as to how there could be such a big discrepancy between what the locals believe to be the case and what the environment agency believes. But certainly, as I've been told often enough that we disagree with our statutory consultees at our peril, I would find it very difficult to justify giving permission for something of which the majority of the site lies within flood zone two. Now we have a local plan, we have a five-year housing land supply, we have plenty of applications to provide the minimum houses that we need, and therefore we're not only entitled, but I think we're wise to be picky about the ones that we approve. And if this has a flood zone risk attached to it, according to the experts, I would need a lot of persuasion that we could ignore that. I think on the other side, I entirely agree with councillor Round, this is not an isolated site, but that's the trouble with planning law. You have a variety of policies, and as the chairman has rightly said, you behave inconsistently at your peril. We're not concerned about isolation in this case, it's right next door to Tilford, but we are concerned about the impact upon the openness of the Green Belt. We spend a lot of time trying to defend. If you create four large houses on what is currently a fundamentally flat and unoccupied site, barring that ghastly greenhouse, you are undoubtedly adversely affecting the openness of the Green Belt, and that's something we are not supposed to do. So while I can sympathise very strongly with the motives of all those who would like to see the site cleaned up, one of the privileges of living in a rural borough with Green Belt and AONB all around you is that you have something that you can refer to when you want to prevent inappropriate applications, but you have to be quite careful before you start dismissing it out of hand, unless you've got very good reasons for the contrary, when it doesn't actually suit. I think councillor Inchbald put it very well indeed. The right way forward is for this applicant, perhaps with the assistance of his local ward councillors, to make an application to the borough council as a local planning authority for an amendment to the Green Belt. And that would seem to me a proper way of going forward, but I don't want to be part of a decision which is basically going to dismiss the Green Belt from our consideration when we spend most of our time saying it's so important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Mulliner. Oh, I was just going to say we seem to be ready to move on, but councillor Inchbald?
Could I just come back, chairman? First of all, reference has been made to consistency and the fact that we refused Borough House Farm, but we didn't refuse it because it was in the Green Belt. The two carefully crafted reasons for refusal did not mention the Green Belt. So that does not... And each application has to be considered on its own merits. It's absurd to suggest that this one should be refused just because it happened to be considered at the same meeting when we considered another application which we turned down. But my view on it is still that this is crying out for development, and I wish we could find a way of getting it through. In fact, we could agree to override the provisions of the policy and allow it, and make an exception. But that is for my fellow members. Thank you.
Yes, the point I was making, it's not that they were identical by any stretch, but that we leave ourselves open to challenge, that's the difficulty, if we are entirely inconsistent with our attitude towards Green Belt SACs, anything else that you care to mention. So we have to be very, very careful when we're mentioning these special designations, that we do apply consistently, do apply our own policy and general policy, national policy consistently. I'd like to move to the recommendation. I noticed councillor Mulliner, you wish to come back?
I just wanted to reassure councillor Inchbald that when I mentioned the inconsistency, I was not thinking for a moment of the other applications that this evening. The earlier one, what the applicant had done successfully, in my opinion, and in agreement with the officers, was to reduce the impact on the openness of the Green Belt by appropriate design of the buildings he proposed to replace the existing nissen huts. Now, if you can reduce openness, good for you. Unfortunately, in this application, it's the reverse. You've currently got very little impact on the openness of the Green Belt, and four large houses is an increase in that adverse impact, and that's what I would be unhappy to suddenly ignore. Thank you.
Thank you to councillor Mulliner. Do the officers wish to say anything else before we move to the recommendation? No, in which case, shall we move to the recommendation, which is on page 119 of your agenda papers, that permission be refused for the reasons one to six? I won't read them all out that are on those pages, that's 119 and 120, and extra condition... Ye of little faith, Louise. Extra condition seven, which is on your update sheet, that permission be refused for those seven reasons. Please, can I see all those in favour of refusing permission?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And those in favour of granting?
Two.
And any abstentions? In that case, permission is refused. Emma has quite rightly suggested that perhaps we should take a six next, as I think there are some public speakers on A6. Keeper's Cottage? Yeah. And then come back, sorry Jane, to yours at the end of the meeting, because there's no public speakers. So if we could move on to A6. WA 2017 2363, Keeper's Cottage, Farnham Road, Tilford, the erection of two dwellings and an ancillary outbuilding together with associated landscaping following demolition of the existing structures and buildings. And it's Rachel Callas who's going to introduce this one for us.
Thank you very much, chairman. To start with, I'll take you through the location plan and aerial view. The site you'll see is outlined in red for you just here, and I've also included the aerial view just here. You'll see it's located in a rural location and accessed by a single track off Farnham Road. At the moment, you'll see, particularly on this plan just here, the site comprises a detached, compact two-storey dwelling, and also a number of associated outbuildings and structures. The site itself is surrounded by a significant amount of woodland. You've got a further aerial view of the site, where you can better see some of the structures on site. Here you'll see the existing dwelling, and you'll see a number of outbuildings. For example, over here, you've got mobile home and outbuildings. Now, the kennels, they're not shown particularly well here, and also here. So you'll see there's quite a spread of development across the site, including both the dwelling and outbuildings. So here, some further photographs of the site. This is looking at the site access and also the access track, because it's quite a significant track to actually get to the focus of the existing development. Here you can see full photographs, they show you the existing dwelling on site. You'll see it's a relatively compact two-storey dwelling with various extensions attached to it. Turning to the outbuildings on site, these are variable in nature. You see, as a mobile home, you've got various enclosures and structures on there, which are just illustrated, a couple of those in the photographs for you. Turning now to the proposal itself, the proposal is for two dwellings following demolition of the existing structures on site. This is proposed unit one. This would be a two-storey building containing five bedrooms, sort of broadly of an L shape. Turning to unit two, this is a single-story structure and also includes a detached home office just here. You can see from this plan, so we've got that the proposed unit one includes a few areas of green roof, just here. A lot of colour on here, but these plans are essentially giving you a comparison point between the existing built form on site and the proposed build. These black outlines here are showing you the footprint of the proposed dwellings. That's one unit here, and just here, we've laid out building. These red buildings you'll see, that's showing you the spread of the existing dwelling and outbuildings on site, and a similar thing in a 3D image on the top right. Turning now to the proposed elevations. On the screen, you'll see unit two, this is set lower down in the site in terms of its levels, and the white structure you see in the background is unit one. This is a two-story structure. Closest to you on the screen is the home office and a single-story unit comprising unit two. This is a further section, you'll see the difference in levels between the two units. You can also see here that the proposed design features pitched roofs, which as I'll come on to is an improvement over the previous schemes submitted. A further illustration, this shows you plot one and gives you a feel for how it would... It is an indicative illustration here, but it gives you a feel for how it would sit within its landscape context. And again, similarly for plot two. As you may recall, the application site has been the subject of applications previously. There has been one scheme for two dwellings, which was recently, reasonably recently, refused by the committee. The current proposal proposes further reductions in comparison with that scheme, and that's the scheme that I've put up for a point of comparison. Here you'll see again, it's a similar idea for the two dwellings, they're in a similar position on site, but you will just see there's a slight reduction in the overall footprint in that proposed previously. Green roofs are again a feature in this scheme, but to a lesser extent than you saw previously. This gives you a comparison with some of the elevations. The previously refused application, reference ending 1894, one of the reasons for refusal did concern the design and the landscape impact. So it's worth having a look to see how those designs have changed. Most notably, whilst it's still quite a modern design, it does move more towards a more conventional built form, particularly noting the pitched roofs and the more simplified structure of the dwellings proposed. There was a previous scheme for three dwellings. I haven't included any images on here, but there are details within your agenda report, and that scheme was dismissed on appeal by the inspector following our own refusal. Before I talk through the determining issues, I just draw the attention to the update sheet that you have before you. This does respond to additional information in respect of biodiversity, surface water drainage and planning infrastructure. I'll come on to those points in more detail. Turning to the matters of principle and technical opinion, they are affordable housing. This is recommended as a reason for refusal. This is a change in position from the previous decisions on site, and that reflects the up-to-date local plan policy that we have now, which allows us to seek affordable housing on this site due to the large floor area proposed. Officers would be seeking a contribution towards off-site affordable housing. At this time, this has not been formally agreed to by the applicant, and there is no legal agreement in place to secure this. That is why it's a reason for refusal. In terms of the impact on highway safety and parking, no objection raised by the county highway authority. In terms of an increase in traffic, it will be limited to that associated with one dwelling, as there is an existing dwelling on site at present. Adequate parking is provided on the dry waste for each dwelling, such to meet the council's parking standards. Turning to the sustainable drainage. Additional information covering full details of the proposed SUD scheme has been recently received. This is a point reflected in your update sheet. This has been reviewed by the local flood authority, who has confirmed those details to be acceptable. The effective list is that the reason for refusal originally included on the agenda report has been overcome. Similarly, in respect of biodiversity, an updated walkover survey has been received. That has been reviewed by, sorry, wildlife trust, who has confirmed the report would be acceptable, and raised no objection subject to appropriate conditions in that respect. Again, in terms of the reason for refusal on your agenda report, that has been overcome by that additional information. Turning now to matters of judgment and the impact on the Green Belt. The proposal is for redevelopment of previously developed land in the Green Belt. In comparison with the existing dwelling and outbuildings on site, there is a net reduction in terms of volume, footprint, floor area and amount of hard standing. As such, it's considered to have less impact on the Green Belt than the existing development, and for that reason, it is considered to be appropriate in the Green Belt. In respect of the location of development, this again was a reason for refusal based on the three-house and two-house schemes that have been dismissed previously. The site is physically separate from any recognised settlement or services, and it is still recommended as a reason for refusal. It is open to members to consider whether there are any benefits to outweigh that harm in terms of the location of the site. Turning to the landscape considerations and visual amenity. It's worth noting that earlier two-house scheme was refused due to its urbanising impact on the character of the site and surrounding area, and also its failure to preserve the landscape character, the area of great landscape value and area of national beauty. Due to the reductions in the amount of the built form and revised design in comparison with that scheme, officers are satisfied that that reason has been overcome and it's acceptable in that respect. However, again, it's a matter of judgment for members to consider whether indeed those changes are enough to overcome that reason. Turning to the impact on residential amenity. The nearest properties to the site are located some around 150 metres east. We're satisfied that distance is enough to prevent any harmful impacts in that respect. Then turn to the recommendation. It's set out for you on your update sheet, and that is that permission be refused for two reasons. That is for unsustainable form of the development, that constitute one... That is for unsustainable form of the development that constitute one new isolated dwelling in the countryside where no special circumstances have been provided to justify the proposal. The second reason is that in the absence of a completed legal agreement, the proposal would fail to provide affordable housing to meet the housing needs of the borough. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Rachel. And as I say, this is the last application with public speaking. Is Rachel Wilkinson on her way, right? And you are an objector to the scheme and you will have four minutes from when you're ready.
Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, Madam Chairman, good evening. My name is Rachel Wilkinson and I live at Utry Cottage, the property next door to the proposed planning application. I'm here to present my views and those of my family, as well as those of the objectors who live next or to or near to the vicinity of Keepers Cottage. We object to the current planning application on the following grounds. As noted by this Appeal Court Committee during the first application's appeal, there is currently one house at Keepers Cottage. It is against government guidelines and rules to add further properties to land in an area of outstanding natural beauty in Green Belt. This point was made very clear by this committee at the last hearing. We do not understand why the applicant has chosen to waste further council and committee time by reapplying for multiple properties again. Surely, the committee's decision should be respected and indeed upheld. This is inappropriate development in the Green Belt. Without prejudice, the applicant has stated that he'll keep reapplying until he gets his three houses. Can a developer seriously keep reapplying until they get what they want? We sincerely hope not. We also questioned the volume calculations in the application. These are based on existing outbuildings that, as you can see, are mostly single-story and for which no planning approval was originally obtained. They do not have significance on the site, particularly at night, most of them being of a very temporary nature. We're concerned the application will most likely be superseded by creeping development applications and that before long, this AONB and Green Belt land will be covered in high-volume properties and the countryside lost forever. The independent survey we commissioned in 2016 by world-leading ecologist Dr Buerson clearly identifies reasons why multiple properties should not be built at Keepers Cottage and that there should only be one property on site. In fact, he actually highly recommended that the only change to the site should be the refurbishment of the existing property. We've heard local horror stories of developers gaining planning approval for developments within areas of AONB and Green Belt, only later to apply for changes in design, additional volume or additional properties and perhaps because a precedent has been set, they seem to succeed in adding more buildings to their original plan. This is a true concern for us that this will happen at Keepers and so we strongly request that the planning department do not let this occur in this instance and instead stick to their decision. Telford, as you may know, is a designated dark village. We're fortunate to live in a woodland where at night it is pitch black. These large, high-volume houses will emit a high volume of internal and external light, which will pollute the night sky and disrupt local wildlife. In the eight and a half years that we've lived at Utry Cottage, there's always been very little traffic going to and from Keepers, perhaps two or three vehicle movements a day. We're concerned that additional properties will require a new road instead of the single-track and produce much more traffic and disruption. Regarding the noted recent visits to the site by trespassers, we see no real link or material reason for these events to substantiate planning approval. The two are not linked. Further, the visitors could be deterred with some simple security. Over the last five months, my husband has asked the applicant to add security, but whilst he's acknowledged the problem, he's refused. That is, until last week, when one sign and only one sign was stuck on the entrance gate, nothing of any real substance has been added to secure the land or the house. The trespassing has sadly affected our children's day-to-day lives as we're no longer comfortable for them to go outside without us. If planning is approved, the likely storage of expensive plants and so on will create even more of a security risk. Further security is required and the police are in agreement. If I may just carry on, I've very nearly finished.
One more sentence.
Thank you. This area is blessed with many different species of mammals, all using this land as their home. Please protect it. You will recall the stripping back of the paddock at Keepers in 2016 and the felling of many trees protected by the TPO. This is still a concern to us and the enforcement teams-
I think we're really going to have to stop you now, Mrs Wilkinson.
Inability to resolve this issue still perplexes us all. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. And now could I ask Mr Bell to come forward, who is a supporter of the scheme?
Chair, just before I start, can I ask, was there a site visit to the site? I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Not just before this application, no. We have been before, but not this one.
Not this particular time. Okay. Thank you. Chair members, good evening. We've been here before on this site and I would just remind you in relation to what you've just heard, you've only got this application in front of you tonight. If it's creeping development or anything else, it'll come before you. You've only got this one to consider. So members, I read the report and it's so nearly there. I think the officers would agree, it is finely balanced, this one. So I'm really disappointed as a supporter of this scheme and I'll explain why. This applicant who owns the site has listened to your committee, has listened to you, all about the design, about stacked containers and being inappropriate urban development. It wasn't all about isolated development. Indeed, you've just heard a neighbour come and speak to you about the site and her concerns, her family's concerned. The application was changed to meet your actual criticisms. It's smaller now and the two dwellings are different. The roof has been designed to overcome this stacked container issue, but the high landscape input has been kept. There would be total site clearance. The applicant did what was wanted and can't understand why this is recommended against. Apparently, dear committee, it's because of you, but as you've been told on the list up there, it is your judgment to decide on this one. It's not a policy or a mandatory requirement, it's your judgment. The parish council supports subject to GB Green Belt policies, but there is no Green Belt issue here. This is appropriate development. It's the replacement of a dwelling and development on previously developed land. The antisocial behaviour here won't go away until this legacy is changed and all of this site is pulled down and altered forever. I can't recommend demolitions without something being sorted out on this site because people forget too quickly as to what was there. But most of all, members, why has it not got special circumstances that you've been debating tonight? When it was accepted last time in Gemma Patterson's long report to you that there were special circumstances? When this matter of Para 55 was not an issue with members at that time? When the design has been altered to meet your members' concern over these stacked containers being too urban? When it meets Green Belt tests of replacement dwellings and PDL development as a whole? It doesn't need very special circumstances? Where it is cited on the part of the land that an independent inspector said was previously developed land? When it repeats the character of the immediate area where there are many large houses in plots all around? At your own time later on in the debate, look at the aerial photo again that you were introduced with. Where any trip is relatively short to amenities and services and there is a bus route at the end of the drive twixt Farnham and Guildford? Where there is a need to start a new chapter on the land, it's paramount given the antisocial behaviour and ghoulish YouTube-ing that is going on on this site? This is despite the security that has been put there and gets removed? When a customer of your services, members, surely could reasonably expect the planners to be consistent when it was recommended last time? Please allow this scheme to go through, even if you want a section 106 agreement for affordable housing or if indeed if you feel anything else is appropriate in relation to no more development. That could be acted on and delegated to your officers, members. Please bring this saga to a conclusion, members, as was almost agreed last year and where your officers considered a larger scheme to be acceptable, even as committee you didn't, but the scheme has been altered to meet your criticisms. Please allow common sense to prevail here, members, and start a new chapter on this site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Bell. Councillors. councillor Adams?
Thank you, yes. I would agree with a lot of what Mr Bell has just said. We did turn down the two previous ones. They were larger, they retained the container-type structure and I think that this design is a very great improvement on that. I don't think this is a particularly isolated site. Yes, it's true to say that the nearest neighbour, who has just been talking to us as well, is some 150 yards away, metres or whatever we use now. But looking in the other direction, there is a number of houses in Camp Hill. Can't, don't know if you can see that. This is in the triangle of, from this, it's a bit difficult to see. Oh, yes, no, it isn't. The right one on the right-hand side, you can see that there's Crooksbury Road to the right and Camp Hill to the left and Waverley Lane to the south there. So there are other large houses that are in fairly isolated positions all around it. The woods behind and to the east of it are now the property of the Forestry Commission and they are just applying for an application to thin them by about 30%. So they will be removing a large number of trees all round the site. But yes, the site has got an unfortunate history. It does need to be sorted out and the parish council, although the parish council has objected, it was not a unanimous objection. So personally, I think this is quite a good proposal. Thank you.
councillor Mulliner?
Thank you, Chairman. I think just to put people's minds at rest, if you read the reasons which the officers put forward, they do not mention Green Belt or AONB for the simple reason that the built form that is proposed is less than the existing built form and we've been over this ground earlier this evening. And I'm perfectly happy that this would not be increasing harm to the openness. I think the point has been made. Is it isolated? I think the fact there's a bus route at the end of the road, if that is true, is a substantial difference with the Borough Hill Farm, Borough House Farm application where there was none such. My own concern with this is although I'm prepared to accept that the designs proposed are better than the previous ones, I don't think they're very good. They're very uniform, very rectangular and I think the applicant should be asked to do better. I would actually add a reason for refusal at this stage, that the design is inadequate. I think they look still pretty unsuitable for the countryside. Perhaps in Sweden they would work, but this is Surrey and I would like to see something different. I'm not too bothered about the rest. I do see there are other reasons and again, they shouldn't simply be forgotten about. It is always open to the applicant, if they wanted to, to knock everything down and put one superb, large country house within the state. That would also solve the problem that is being referred to. Putting up two houses which individually cost less to buy is simply another solution. I don't think this committee should be concerned about the financial implications of one solution or another. I entirely agree, this site should be sorted out, as councillor Adam says, there's more than one way of doing it. But certainly, if we are to grant permission for two houses on the basis it isn't creating more harm to the openness of the Green Belt and the AONB and it's not as isolated as others, then I would like to see better design than I'm seeing at the moment. Thank you.
councillor Mulliner, councillor Round?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I tend to agree with much of that. I too don't like the design. In fact, I'd rather have the old one. I can't remember why we threw it out. Okay, stacked containers. If you take a proportioned view of where we live, I mean, the whole country and our recent history, a lot of places were messed up in World War II and hey, that was 70 years ago and probably since and we've had a lot of sites like this. Isn't it funny how we get them all on the same evening? Surely, we are getting rid of them gradually? I can't see that sites like this one or any of the three we're talking about, not that's the last one, would be allowed to get as far as they have these days. I think I'm probably right in saying that 20 or 40 years ago, planning was a little more lax or loose than it is now and therefore you were able somehow to clutter a beautiful valley with gorilla pens, pig pens and whatever other, what are the other kinds of pens that the guys put there? It's a horrid place. I suspect there's only a few of them left like this in the borough and aren't we lucky that someone wants to spend the money clearing it up? Frankly, I wouldn't mind if it was two or four houses. Anything more than one is almost similar. Have one splendid house, there'd be a wonderful position. To have two, less so and maybe more. However, we're not debating that. I just think we should give approval and let the place get cleaned up because if we don't do it now, how much longer does this go on? Oh, my sympathy to the lady who spoke very articulately, I'd be rather, having visited that site some months ago, I'd be rather scared of my kids going outside and playing with that stuff and people it attracts being right next door. I'd rather it was diverted with two nice houses. Anyway, I'll vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've had some comment from councillor Mulliner on the design, minus the positioning, the sort of linear look on the site. I can see why we've ended up with this, trying to reuse buildings and whatever, but I think it results in a very odd-looking pattern of development that we don't see in the area. But, you know, it's all personal, isn't it? councillor, oh, no councillor yet, so are we ready to move to the recommendation?
I'd like to move, add a reason for refusal for design.
Can we just check that with the officers? Are we allowed to be design police these days?
Design is a matter of judgment, so you, it would be perfectly reasonable to come to a conclusion that you find the design unsatisfactory.
councillor Round?
I hesitate to say this, but I've always been told the opposite, that we are not arbiters of taste.
I think, having such a long meeting, please, can we not debate that at the moment? We've just had the opinion of the officer-
Turn to redesign.
Can you turn your microphone off, please, councillor Round? councillor Inchball?
I'd be very happy to second councillor Mulliner's proposal.
Right, so with that extra reason, can we turn to the recommendation which, oh, sorry, is that a motion? I thought we were just foaming up the conditions. Right, shall we take a vote then, please, on the, we didn't vote the other one, did we? For the extra reason that we want to include dislike of the design? Can I see all those in favour of that extra reason for refusal? Well, we're just going to vote on it, councillor Round, you can vote against.
Doesn't it assume that we're refusing it?
No. No, that's just, if we are going to, if we've got another motion, we have to vote on that before we can move to the recommendation, whichever way it goes. Right, so we have a motion, an amendment, that we add a reason to the other reasons.
Oh, it's not two.
Oh, for goodness sake, two, yeah, yeah. Right, but we want it to be three reasons. So could we vote, please, on the suggestion that we vote, when we're looking at the recommendation, on a third reason for design? Can I see all those in favour of putting in a third reason before we move to the recommendation? Sorry, I thought you were counting them. Right, those in favour, I've already said that, of the extra reason. And those against putting in an extra reason? Can we move then to the recommendation, which is on your update sheet? On page six of the update sheet, that permission be refused for the following reasons, the two that are written on your update sheet and the third one concerning design. There is also an informative, I think, but it's just on the way that this application was dealt with. was dealt with. So can I see all those in favour, please, of that recommendation to refuse permission?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And those in favour of granting permission? And any abstentions?
One.
In that case, thank you very much, permission is refused for those reasons. And now we move to the very last application, which is not subject to public speaking.
No one's registered.
Oh, sorry, no one's registered to speak. Yeah, yeah. And this is going back to, this is going back to A5, WA 2018 0346. So just wait till the background noise has gone. Yeah, you can't leave this place quietly, don't worry. It's not designed for quiet exits. Right, so back to the final application. Plot one at Shortfield House, Hamlash Lane, Frensham, an application under Section 73A to vary condition 11 of 2018 2016 0976 to allow the erection of an attached garage, the absence of public speaking. So Jane, over to you, please, to introduce this to us.
Thank you, Chairman. The application is located in the west side of Hamlash Lane in Frensham, which is semi-rural in character. The site is currently under development and one detached dwelling and a pair of semi-detached dwellings are under construction. The detached dwelling, the detached dwelling and one of the semi-detached dwellings both have a garage permitted. Some photographs. Photo A shows the proposed elevation where the garage would be built. Photograph B looks towards Hamlash Lane and shows where the garage would be situated. Photo C shows the garages mostly constructed on unit two and unit three. Photograph D looks sort of more closely at the cottages opposite on Hamlash Lane. Photograph E shows the adjacent dwellings in Gorse Cottage from the position of the proposed garage. Photo F shows the rear area of the development and photograph G shows the front elevation of unit one at present without a garage. This shows the proposed block plan. The garage would be erected on the southern elevation of unit one. It would be a single-storey and have a barn-hipped roof and would be constructed in matching materials. There would be a separation distance of 6.2 metres to the boundary with Gorse Cottage's here and about 22 metres to the boundary of the cottages opposite across Hamlash Lane. Some proposed elevations. This shows the permitted garage on unit two. The proposed elevation from the front, here you can see that the proposed garage in unit one would be lower than the permitted garage on unit two. It would have a ridge height of 5.5 metres and eaves of 2.2 metres. Here you can see the proposed garage in question and from the west or from the rear elevation, you can see that the proposed garage would not have first-floor accommodation like in unit two, which has accommodation in the loft. And again, this floor plan shows that there wouldn't be loft accommodation. In conclusion, officers consider that the garage would appear acceptable within the streets in of Hamlash Lane. Furthermore, there would be no harmful impact on the amenities of the adjoining occupiers or upon the AGLV or upon the countryside beyond the Greenbelt. The matters of principle or technical opinion are the principal development, the amenity space and technical standards, the impact on heritage, parking, impact on the ancient woodland and the effect on the SPA. The matters of judgment which members are now asked to consider are the design and impact on the countryside beyond the Greenbelt. Officers consider that the proposed garage is not more materially harmful than what's already permitted. Furthermore, there is sufficient space on site to accommodate the garage without it being harmed to the openness of the area. The garage would be a modest size. It would have a lower ridge height than those already permitted. The intrinsic character and beauty of the AGLV would therefore be safeguarded. There is sufficient space for not to be a harmful impact on the residential amenity of properties on Gorse Cottage or across Hamlash Lane and therefore we recommend it for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Jane. Do anyone need comment on this or can we move straight to the recommendation? Would you like to comment, councillor Adams?
Yes. I just brought this one to the committee because it shows what can happen when things don't actually work out quite the way that you hoped. This particular site, could you go to the broader picture with the one, I think, that's the one, no, the one with the other all around it? No, the one, no, the one with, that's the one, yeah, yeah, yeah. There's been a lot of disquiet about this whole development in Hamlash Lane in Frensham, which is why I brought it to the committee. The Frensham boundary runs along the south side of that road, so the, that's right, yeah, is on the south side, opposite to that. Initially, the two houses just where the arrow is were permitted by this committee. So the whole of that area along there was actually open land and this is part of the area of, candidate area of AONB. So that's what's significant about it. It is only AGLV at the moment, but the Surrey Hills AONB is supposed to be being considered right now. So there was quite some concern about those two houses on the right-hand side of the picture, about on the north side of the road, but as you can see, they're well back from the road and they have some significant land with them because, again, this is very close to the SPA. When the proposal for the three houses came up, we in fact, in the committee, turned it down on the basis of intensification and it was allowed by an inspector because at that time we didn't have a five-year supply. But it was allowed without any garages, so there was a gap, bigger gap between the houses and all the cars were parked outside, which is not unusual in this area. One of the additional garages was allowed by permitted development before we changed the rules of call-ins. I mean, there's been a significant number of objections, which is why qualified for call-in. And now we have the last garage on those three houses. And what was along all of the north side, an open area of land which complemented the idea of it being AONB and a boundary to Frensham, is now with this additional garage going to look across the road to a mass of built form, which is a real great disappointment, really, and it's just something that's gone wrong. We decided to prevent it, but we were overruled by the inspector when he allowed the three houses instead of two. So the reason, I wouldn't have brought this in if I'd known we were going to have five others before it, but it has been on the list to be called in for some time. It's just happened to have turned up tonight. So I don't think there's any particular reason why we should object to it in planning terms because it is still AGLV, although it's in, as I say, the candidate area of the AONB. But I did just really want this to be broadcast on the web for members of Frensham to know that we are concerned about it. Thank you.
Well done, councillor Adams. You had your rant and as we know, we can't hold this applicant to ransom just because we lost something on appeal and it's not what we wanted. You know, this is a very small, really, for this applicant, very small application. And as I say, we can't blame this applicant for misdemeanours of inspectors and others in the past, but councillor Edwards, you wish to add something?
Ten seconds. We actually did a site visit on this and compared to the other houses on that road, it's over development and, but I can't see any problem. We are where we are now.
It's practically built, I mean, you know, it's all there, it's a building site, so we are where we are on this one. Right, can we move then to, now councillor Adams feels better? Can we? Move, we all need a rant occasionally, councillor Adams. The recommendation then for this one is that, subject to conditions 1 to 10 and informative one in your agenda, permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission? Well, we're not unanimous. Can I see all those against granting permission? And abstentions? One abstention. Can I thank you all for your good humour during that very long meeting? Perhaps we can avoid too many call-ins on the same night, but that's just the way it works. But thank you very much indeed, everyone, and I think we ought to have a five-minute break.